Here. Jason Blair?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item two is the consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held December 4th, 2023. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held November 7th, 2023. Item C, approve the issuance of a $500 end-of-year stipend for all regular and probationary, full-time active employees as well as regular part-time active employees receiving benefits as of December 1st, 2023, and a $250 end-of-year stipend for all other active part-time employees as of December 1st, 2023, per City Council Resolution Number 7023. Item D, appoint Emily Ritchie to the Moore Planning Commission to serve the remainder of the three-year term beginning in August 2023. Item E, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year 2023, 2024 in the amount of $5,799,475.73.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Motion passes. Item three, consider approval of ordinance number 103823, amending Part Five, Chapter One, Articles B, C, and D by deleting Section 5-120, allowing for exceptions from building permit requirements establishing investigation processes and required fees for work done without a building permit and unauthorized cover-up work, and establishing a building board of appeals providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Hello, council. In your packets, items three through 11 are companion items. Those items are proposed adoptions to the 2018 International Code Series and the 2020 National Electric Code, addendums and local supplements. Updating the codes will help, are important in protecting the health and safety occupants, addressing a wide range of hazards, helping with resiliency, address current building practices, address new materials and products used to building construction. The building vision with the community development department worked with the Fire Marshal's Office and with construction committees in reviewing the 2018 International Code Series and the 2020 National Electric Code. The recommendations from the boards were unanimous as presented in your packets. The proposed updates will replace the 2015 codes and 2014 codes. We can discuss more in detail or I can give them in general because there's several items on there. Don't know if you guys want to just kind of do it one at a time or just kind of do it as general right now to give them all of them.
Yeah, you can just do them all the way and then we'll do them one at a time.
I'll try to give the code as I go through.
So just one question. Did the state of Oklahoma adopt IBC 2018?
So at the end of that, I was going to tell you, the state of Oklahoma has adopted 2018 codes. They adopted them in September 14th, 2021.
Okay.
And in September 14th, '22, they adopted the International Residential and the Electric Code. So we're already a year beyond from the closest adoption they've done.
My industry is even further behind.
In ordinance 1038.23 is just the general, remove some out-of-date exceptions. We established a work without permit and uncovering unauthorized covering. And we established the Board of Appeals. Appeals was an application and interpret a better building officials code and discussion. It's more formalized an appeal versus what we currently have. 1039.23, that kind of helped out. Just define the term that's used a lot anymore. It's called flex space. And that's such a broad term. We kind of had generalized that. Then also, we removed the footer designs and placed responsibly onto the professional engineers. We kept the wind resiliency code that we have adopted since 2014, the one-two family. And just kind of, you don't know, the state has adopted this, but it's just kind of a new change that the builders are going to get used to is a manual J. It's where they design for the heat and air exchange. They have to submit that, then also an outdoor emergency electrical service disconnect. So you'll have your panel inside the garage, but you got to have a button or a switch that turns it outside for emergency personnel to turn off the house in case there's an emergency or means of that. But those two are state adoptions, but those are kind of the two hot topics that you may hear throughout the state. 1040.23 is the plumbing. We put in there more protection on the footer and we provide a minimum distance for the private service line to a main and required a sanitary sewer backflow check system for all new construction. 1041.23, electric. We allowed, we're not allowing the use of aluminum wire and residual occupancies or sleeping quarters. And 1042.23, mechanical access plenums and boots under slabs. We're starting to see a growth of ductwork being put underneath the slab versus up in the attic. And that's also continuation from the last code update. 1043.23, property maintenance code. I will tell you, the state hasn't adopted that code. The reason why they haven't adopted it is because it's more of a local code use. And what you guys see here is a continuation we've already adopted. The last one kind of addressed more the exterior property, but the property maintenance code is more of a formalized. It gives us documentation review. It tells us the appeal process. It gives us more of a structured component to it. And majority of the cities now are actually starting to adopt all those throughout the state. 1044, the fire code. It addresses firewall labeling to keep the protection in place and it helps identify the placement of firewalls to aid fire personnel during an event. It also addresses the minimum fire area for S1 occupancies. That's like your mini storage units to 2,500 square feet, just like the adoption was in 2015 code, and define where sprinklers are required in attic spaces. 1043.23, the fuel gas. It updated the footer protection. And 1046.23 is existing building code. This provides a better understanding and the scope for the work on existing structures. We've got a lot of remodels occurring in tenant spaces and some of the occupancies are Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. It tells you how it is, what scope you have to replace. One big discussion you always hear a lot of times when someone remodels is like the ADA bathrooms. This gives them direction when that has to be updated and when it doesn't. And I already told you about the state statute. So staff's recommendations to accept items three through 11. If there are any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, real quick. So there has already, we've already established a building, a board of appeals for the city? Or is that at the state level?
No. So we have to have our own board of appeals. And the purpose of the board of appeals is basically not to, let's say there's a code, a minimum code, and I don't feel like that we should have to do that. No, that's not what the board appeals. The board of appeals is more like, I interpret it this way. They may interpret it a different way. If we can't come to a compromise, they have a means and measures to appeal my decision. Currently, it's not really established in there. Then also, we got an organization that encouraged us to get more of a formalized appeal. If you guys looked at it, it also gave you a criteria, what you have to be on the board. Right now, we don't really have a criteria and it really just addresses mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. I presented about, I think, 11 cases to you tonight, or 10. Current code only addresses three, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. Does anything about building, nothing about existing building code, nothing about property maintenance code. It's just, there's no verbiage about.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I'm making a motion. We approve item three, 103823.
Second.
Motion and a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item four, consider approval of ordinance number 103923, amending Part Five, Chapter Two, Article A, Sections 5-201 through 5-210, and Part Five, Chapter Two, Article D, Sections 5-251 through 5-253, adopting the 2018 International Building Code and the 2018 International Residential Code as amended and modified by the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, and adopting local amendments to said code, establishing minimum regulations governing the design, installation, and construction of building for one to two family dwellings within the city, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item five, consider approval of ordinance number 104023, amending Part Five, Chapter Three, Article A, Sections 5-301 through 5-307, adopting the 2018 International Plumbing Code as amended and modified by the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, and adopting local amendments to the said code, establishing minimum regulations governing the design, installation, and construction of plumbing systems within the city, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item six, consider approval of ordinance number 104123, amending Part Five, Chapter Four, Article A, Sections 5-401 and 5-411, adopting the 2020 National Electric Code as amended and modified by the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, and adopting local amendments to said code, establishing minimum requirements governing the design, installation, and construction of electrical systems within the city, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item seven, consider approval of ordinance number 104223, amending Part Five, Chapter Five, Article A, Sections 5-501 through 5-507, adopting the 2018 International Mechanical Code as amended and modified by the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, and adopting local amendments to the said code, establishing minimum regulations governing the design, installation, and construction of mechanical systems within the city, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item eight, consider approval of ordinance number 104523, amending Part Five, Section, sorry, Part Five, Chapter Nine, Sections 5-901 through 5-902, adopting the 2018 International Fuel Gas Code as amended and modified by the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, and adopting local amendments to said code, establishing minimum regulations governing the design, installation, and construction of fuel gas systems within the city, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Move to approve?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item nine, consider approval of ordinance number 104623, amending Part Five, Chapter 12, Sections 5-1201 through 5-1202, adopting the 2018 International Existing Building Code as amended and modified by the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, and adopting local amendments to said code, establishing minimum regulations governing the design, modification, and remodeling of existing buildings within the city, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item 10, consider approval of ordinance number 104323, amending Part Eight, Chapter 11, Article A, Section 8-1105, and Article B, Sections 8-1111 through 8-1114, adopting the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code and adopting local amendments to the said code, establishing minimum regulations governing the enforcement, evaluation, procedure, and construction of property maintenance within the city, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item 11, consider approval of ordinance number 104423, amending Part 13, Chapter One, Article A, Section 13-101 and 13-103, adopting the 2018 International Fire Code as amended and modified by the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, and adopting local amendments to the said code, establishing minimum regulations governing the installation and construction of building fire protection within the city, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Will you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Great job, I know.
I just kept scrolling. I just kept coming.
Good job, Melissa.
Thanks to the city for all the work they did there.
And I'm happy that we're up to, we're getting closer to where the Uniform Building Code Commission is. Item 12, consider awarding bid number 2024-006, Veterans Memorial Park Trail Enhancement to Green Shade Trees LLC in the amount of $562,209.85 as the lowest bidder and approve the contract for the same.
Vice Mayor and Council, this trail enhancement is for the southern part of Veterans Park with all work being located south of Seventh Street. There should be little or no issues with the playground, pavilion, monument areas, and parking on the north side. Recommend approval.
Thank you for all the city's help with this. I know our constituents have been looking forward to this, so.
Should be fun.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I'm sorry, real quick. Have we ever done work with Green Shade Trees?
They are a fairly new company. This was the first time we actually brought a bid or got a bid from them, and the landscape architect recommends them highly.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good.
Do you have a motion and a second? Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Sorry. Item 13, consider authorizing staff to solicit proposals for the management and programming of recreational youth baseball activities to be held at Buck Thomas Park for the 2024 league and tournament season.
The Parks and Recreation Department had issues with compliance of the 2022 lease agreement. We feel that we need to go into a different direction and are asking permission to send out an RFP. MYBA, the President Association, will be submitting a proposal that includes reorganization. Recommend approval.
We have someone signed up to speak on this item. I guess first, do you guys have any questions?
No. I'm just curious on the process for the review of, reviewing of the bids or the proposals when they come in. Is there going to be a committee formed? Is there?
Evaluate the proposals with staff, take them to the Parks Board, and then bring them to the council.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. We have Kenneth Crawford signed up to speak. If you would like to come up, and please state your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes.
Thank you, council, for taking the time to listen to the public. My name is Kenneth Crawford. I'm the vice president for Oklahoma Little League International, the same organization that you see out of Williamsport and on ESPN. I'm also the president for the Bryan Crawford Memorial Foundation and director for BCM Sports, nonprofits and not-for-profits. I have a master's degree in sports administration, bachelor's in education, retired firefighter, chief officer at Tinker Air Force Base with a passion for kids. I've been a volunteer for 20 years and I see excellence out of the city of Moore. In 1976, I grew up here. Youth sports was a big part of my life, baseball and basketball. And I want to facilitate opportunity for kids, no matter what. I have a grandson that has special needs, is very dear to my heart. That is the program for Little League International, providing opportunity for kids. Nothing else, pure and simple, doing it the right way. I'm committed, passionate to the state of Oklahoma for Little League and for kids. Baseball, softball, football, any sport. We have a foundation that does scholarships, and I feel that Little League is needed in the state of Oklahoma and our culture that we currently have throughout the state. And so I would love to work in partnership with the city that gave me so much when I went to Kelly and played for the Bears and Central Lions and Highland East and all that, you know? If it wasn't for coaches and kids in this community, I don't know where I would be. My life has taken me 20 years of being for kids and opportunity, and that's what we want to do with Oklahoma Little League. And we're committed to this community. We have a charter in Tulsa, Oklahoma, right now. I'm in constant contact with Blaine at Waco. Blaine and Caleb, they're the Southwest Regional Directors, and with Jordan and Steve at Williamsport International, and they are all committed to the state of Oklahoma. Up until recently, there's not been a known reason why Little League could be successful in the state of Oklahoma other than the month of August. So I hope that we can work together to bring this to kids in our communities.
That's great. And I assume you're going to submit a proposal?
Yes, sir. I'm going to, we're going to submit a proposal, you know, to try to be that bridge and bring opportunity for kids in what may be a chaotic timeframe for the community. We all need to come together as adults and provide that leadership. And I'm willing to do whatever I can to facilitate that. Little League would love to be a part of that, but we'll work with anybody that wants to be a part of Little League, wherever that takes us. I can be reached anytime. Anybody from the community has questions about Little League. I am a proponent for Little League, but I'm also on the side of the competitive side. There needs to be facilitation in both of those, and it can work, and we will make it work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on this item? Absolutely. Come on, come on up. If you'll state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Casey Cobberly. I was a volunteer coordinator with MYBA, and this kind of took us for a loop, if you will, just because as coordinators, we weren't on the executive board side of things as far as dealing with the city of Parks and Rec and whatnot. And so our, our essential thoughts with the city was just the, basically the communications back and forth as far as if there would be bathrooms, new bathrooms built out there, what the split was going to look like on that. We obviously didn't have any clue until this letter and stuff was sent out last week that this had happened. And right away, I reached out to, the two individuals that are on that letter to see what we could do to try to fix this. MYBA has been out here for 30 years. It's offered a lot for the community, competitive rec, Courage League, to even Adult League. We've since, our president stepped down, I've stepped up to kind of keep things going as we're all in limbo here. We've restructured our board to add, we're up to eight board members to better facilitate, better checks and balances, all that sort of stuff. We do plan to try to put in a bid proposal as well to keep things going. It's just brought so much to the community, and I guess for us too, we're, you know, sorry that we weren't as involved as, you know, the coordinators that, you know, we didn't really see some of this stuff coming, and we're just trying to do whatever we can to fix it and make it right. Thank you, guys.
And Sue, you said if they restructure the board, then they can submit a proposal as well?
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion?
Anyone else?
Oh, you want, sorry.
Vanessa, has a motion already been made on this?
No.
Not on this.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Patrice Williams, 1061 Northwest Sixth Street. Apparently, there were meetings. I was just listening to the MYBA, I guess he's president now, speak. Apparently, there were meetings called last week, but nobody in the MYBA community, Facebook, nothing on their website about a meeting being held. I don't want to see it start being stuff hidden again. Not saying they're hiding stuff, but it makes it seem that way. So we need to make sure that everything's out in the open and done correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item 14, consider approval of a budget amendment to provide for the purchase of property at 2,001 North Moore, which is authorized by city council on the September 18th, 2023 meeting. Increase the budget for additional grants and donations received during fiscal year 2024, carryover balance of the prior year equipment per fire union contract, and increase softball improvements budget to utilize prior year collections.
Vice Mayor and Council, I know that was a mouthful. Several items on this. The gist of it is, these are items that were not known about, either donations or additional grant monies that weren't known about when the initial FY24 budget was approved. So this item will make allowance for those items as well as for the purchase that the council's already purchased. We've got all the expenses in now, so we know what the final cost is going to be. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Will you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item 15, consider approval of an agreement with Team, is it? I was going to spell it off. Team Design P L C in the amount of $244,240 for professional engineering services for the Northwest Street, Northwest 27th Street reconstruction project from Hillcrest Avenue extending east to I-35 Service Road.
Vice Mayor and Council, items 15, 16, and 17 are companion items in that they all three simply are hiring the design consultants for the design-only projects that were approved as part of the 2023 bond issue that was approved by the voters on November 14th.
Have we worked with Team before?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't recognize them.
On item 15, staff would recommend Team Design for the design of Northwest 27th from Shields Boulevard, essentially Hillcrest to I-35 Service Road. Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item 16, consider approval of an agreement with Garver LLC in the amount of $453,924 for professional engineering services for the Eastern Avenue reconstruction project from Northeast 12th Street to Northeast 27th Street.
We would recommend approval of the award to Garver. They did do the design from Fourth Street to Northeast 12th Street, and so therefore, it's just a continuation of the existing design of 27th Street.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Will you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item 17, consider approval of agreement with Olson, Inc. in the amount of $550,825 for professional engineering services for the Northeast 27th Street reconstruction project from Eastern Avenue extending west to I-35 Service Road.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, item passes. Item 18, consider awarding a contract in the amount of $83,549.85 with John A. Marshall Company utilizing Omnia Partners, a government purchasing co-op for furniture for the new Moore Animal Adoption Center.
Counsel, this, the furniture that we're purchasing through this contract is for the new Animal Adoption Center, and it includes chairs, desks, cabinets, benches, and multiple pieces of furniture for the brand-new facility that's ready to be opened soon.
Is this just for the office furniture? What about for, like, the kennels and things? Is that going to be a separate item, or?
That was a separate item. We bid that back during, in the early stages of the design, and that was a separate item that we already approved, and the kennels, for the kennels themselves, for the, for the dogs and cats, and those, I understand, will be delivered sometime, I want to say first, second week of January, and should, in about three weeks, yeah, about three weeks to install them all after that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, item passes. Item 19, consider approval of renewal application for stop-loss insurance with Ironshore Indemnity, Inc. to be administered by Assured Benefits Administrators, Inc. effective January 1, 2024 through January 1, 2025.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, in December of 2021, you approved a change to our health insurance stop-loss carrier, moving Dallas, excuse me, moving to Dallas, now I'm like you, ma'am, moving to Dallas Risk Management, Ironshore, to be administered through our TPA, Assured Benefits Administrators. Today I am requesting your approval to renew our agreement with Dallas Risk Management. Daniel Summers and Diane Barton with Gallagher, our benefits consultants, were able to negotiate a renewal for 2024 that decreases our expected annual spend on stop-loss by around 4%, which is just over $269,000, $269,000, that's not right, $269,000, through an increase in our specific deductible from $125,000 to $135,000. Sorry about that. That increase is possible because of the work we have been doing with our healthcare and insurance partners to reduce stop-loss claims. Staff recommends approval, and I can give you those numbers again if I need to.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, item passes. We'll now re-source the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 20 is the consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held December 4th, 2023. Item B, ratify action of the City Council regarding renewal for stop-loss insurance with Ironshore Indemnity, Inc. to be administered by Assured Benefits Administrators, Inc. effective January 1, 2024 through January 1, 2025. And Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2023-2024 in the amount of $715,803.71.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, item passes. Item 21, consider approval of an excess public officials and employment practice liability policy with Indian Harbor Insurance Company in the amount of $49,580.44 with Glenn Harrison Associates as agents.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, this is the renewal of our excess public officials and employment practices liability policy. Our agent has shot the market, and the policy from Indian Harbor is the best premium with the same level of coverage. Last year, our premium was $42,342 with Hudson Insurance. Hudson Insurance no longer writes this type of policy, so we had to go with a different company. The premium through Indian Harbor is $49,580.44. It has the same level of coverage as we had last year, so there is no changes there. This is roughly a 17% increase over last year. Recommend approval. Greg Finch from Glenn Harrison Associates is here to answer any questions if they're too difficult. He's here.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, item passes. Item 22, consider approval of a property and contents insurance policy with OMEG excess property and contents policy through Homeland Insurance Company of New York, excess flood insurance policy with voyeur indemnity insurance company, cyber insurance with underwriters at Lloyd's, and physical damage coverage with, for the city's sanitation trucks, sanitation trucks, fire trucks, and mobile command unit through RLI, with a total premium amount for all policies in the amount of $851,417.2 with Russell Hollingsworth of Dillingham Insurance as agent.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, this is a renewal of our property insurance. A property insurance consists of the cyber insurance, the equipment floater, which is another term for sanitation trucks and fire engines, they're all in the same, same policy. We have excess flood, we have excess property, and then we have our primary property insurance. Since the preparation of this agenda, we have continued to work on modifying the policies and trying to get better deals. So before the meeting, I handed out a new premium comparison that has been handed out to, to, to council. The total amount for all of the policies comes Going through all of the policies, our primary property, the renewal, as you see there, is $446,856. It is through OMEG, it is the same company that we had last year. It went up from last year at $351,317. Our excess property, how that works is, we have about $178 million worth of property total in the city, so our property insurance covers the first $100 million. We have excess property to cover 70 million on top of that, and that's where you see our excess property. That has gone up from last year. Last year, we had a total excess property premium of $50,000. This year, we have two different companies for a total of about $166,000, so it's gone up by about, about triple. We have excess flood on certain properties that we have. That premium has not gone up or down, it has stayed the same, $44,061.2. The equipment floater, that, like I said before, that is our sanitation trucks, our fire trucks. As you are aware, we have been purchasing a lot of new sanitation trucks lately, so we have a lot of high-dollar sanitation trucks that we have to cover now. We've had three claims recently, I think over the last two years or so, so our premium on that has gone from $66,000 to $118,694. We did explore maybe having a different deductible amount. We could have went from, right now, this quote is for a $50,000 deductible. We did look at a $75,000 deductible, which would have lowered our premium to $110,000. I did not think that that was worth lowering it by $8,000 to get that much of a difference of a deductible. Again, the primary cause for that is, we have a lot of new sanitation trucks, and the mobile command unit is also a part of that as well. Our cyber insurance, actually, I was kind of surprised, that stayed the same, $50,000. So that has stayed the same, all the, the same level of, of coverage, all stayed the same as well. The good news is, we are planning a, roughly, a $40,000, I'm going to call it a rebate, from last year, because we had no property claims from last year. I'm expecting it to be around $40,000. We usually get that around February or March, so that is going to be sent to us as well. Russell Hollingsworth from Dillingham Insurance is here to answer any questions that we may have, but staff recommends approval.
Yuck, but I'm, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'm going to have, excuse me for a second. We first are going to have to do a motion to amend the agenda item because the
The amount is
Amount is incorrect, so we have to do a motion and a second, vote on that, and then approve.
Can I read the 877? That's the right number now, right?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, I make a motion for item 22, that we amend it from 851-417-02 to 877-0202.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the vote.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, item carries. Now we need a motion to approve item 22.
Make a motion to approve item 22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, will you please call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Abstain.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, item carries. We'll now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting, consent doc, item 23. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held December 4th, 2023. Item B, approve payments of workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $20,736 for CBR number 2050001032 for Joshua Trent, an authorized placement on the tax adverum, tax rule. Item C, approve payment for the workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $15,840 for CBR number 205001103 for Ernest Lockhart, an authorized placement on the adverum tax rule. Item D, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year 2023 and 2024 in the amount of $312,627.20.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, item passes. We'll now recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Will you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here. Item 25, the consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held November 20th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
I feel like you need to at least scoot back in the back up when you're changing your, your role.
Recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. Item 26 is new business. Item A is citizens' forums for items not on the agenda. Anybody want to speak? Item B is items from the City Council trustees.
Nothing for me.
Item C is items from this city trust manager.
Just a couple of things. We received a letter from the Oklahoma Association Chief of Police thanking us for the body armor donation that the council recently approved. In this past weekend, I was a judge at the American Legion speech contest for high schoolers in the Moore Public Schools, and so it was a good contest, and they have a chance to win nationals, to win a $25,000 scholarship.
Very nice, very nice.
Item 27 is the executive session. Section 307, Title 25, Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, take possible action in the pending litigation styled Jeff Cloud P L C versus the City of Moore, case number CJ 2023 1481, and authori, an authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city as authorized by 25 Statute 307B4. Item B, discuss and consider the acquisition of property known as Donna's Razor Cuts located at 209 Southeast Fourth related to the construction and maintenance of the Southeast Fourth Street Railroad underpass project, and authorize staff to proceed as directed in executive session as authorized by 25 Statute 307B3.
Make a motion, we convene to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.[1380.83]
Do I have a motion on item A?
Proceed as directed.
Second.
A motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, item passes. A motion for item B.
Make a motion for staff to proceed as directed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, adjourned.
All right, everyone may have Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Ho, ho, ho.